Discussion tonight is our legislative program. And as many of you know, Ms. Darnatt Kofax passed the baton off to me this, or I passed the baton off to her this year. And then she went off to London, and so she passed it back to me. So I will be leading this work session tonight, much to my dismay. But we do have
Oh, thank you.
We do have our good friend, Michael Malloy, here tonight, who is going to lead us through this. And just as a brief outline of what we're going to do, hopefully, in the next 50 minutes, is get a brief introduction to the political landscape that has changed slightly since our last session, and then go into the beef of the legislative program. And also, probably, touch on a couple of the suggested additions to the program. I know Ms. Janie Strauss has one. And then Ms. McLaughlin also came forward with some things. We didn't hear from anyone else, so hopefully, that means all of you are happy with this. So with that, I will hand it off to Mr. Malloy and Mr. Smith.
All right. Thank you. Good evening, everybody. I will try to get through this as quickly as we possibly can. But obviously, as we go through, if you have questions or comments, please, please slow me down if I'm trying to move the train a little too fast. Always like to kind of start off with a little bit of an update on where we are in terms of the political landscape, in terms of what things look like in Richmond. As you all are very, very well aware, just finished an election cycle here in Virginia. Not only the House of Delegates, but also the Senate of Virginia were up for election or reelection. You started the night with a House of Delegates that was overwhelmingly Republican, and a Senate which had a 21-19 Republican majority. You ended the night with a House of Delegates which was overwhelmingly Republican, and a Senate which had a 21-19 Republican majority. So for all of the machinations of the elections, you really ended up with essentially the same numerical landscape that you had down in Richmond. Now, that's not to say that there aren't some changes. You had some significant retirements. When we get back and have the next General Assembly session, we will have a new chairman of the Senate Finance Committee. There will be a new chairman of the Senate Education and Health Committee, which deals with all the education legislation that comes through the Senate. So you will see some differences in terms of leadership and in terms of personnel that are in Richmond. But in terms of the broad landscape, it's pretty much the same as it was as we left the last General Assembly session. In terms of the budget, you've seen a lot of the news that there's revenues in Virginia have been on the upswing, and they actually continue to be on an upswing. So there's a lot of optimism going into this budget cycle, with the sequestration kind of behind us for the moment, at least for a temporary resolution. That was kind of the biggest headwind that was still in front of the next General Assembly session. With that kind of behind us, you've got the revenue picture looking better. So there is a degree of optimism that going into this session, the budget situation, at least in Richmond, is going to look a little better than it has in the last few years. Now, I do have to temper that optimism with some news that we've been recently receiving. As you know, this is a budget year, and in a budget year, the state goes through a process of re-benchmarking, which is they catch their state formulas up to the actual costs that localities face in terms of what they provide for education. The initial estimates for that were, over the biennium, I think it was $387 million, somewhere in that range. We've found out recently that in the next couple of days, that number's going to jump up to about $500 million over the biennium. That is, on the one hand, good news, because that's additional funding for public education. But if you're familiar with the re-benchmarking process, because what that's doing is kind of backfilling what localities have already been spending over the past two years to catch the state up, that means that there are possibly less, in the way of discretionary revenue, available for additional public education initiatives. In addition, you're getting a lot of news that the healthcare side of the ledger, and not even having to do with Medicaid expansion or that discussion, but just in terms of healthcare costs in general for the state, they've gone up fairly substantially. So that's going to be another budget driver and another place where state revenue is going to be allocated. So you've got kind of a good news, bad news scenario at the state, but it's certainly much better news than we've had over the last few years coming out of the state. And then, before I get into the program, I also spent the last couple of days in Charlottesville. The House Education Committee held a committee retreat, dealt with a number of topics, and I just wanted to share a few of them with you. A lot of it is very familiar, things that have been talked about repeatedly, SOL, the SOL Innovation Committee, a lot of the challenges that we face at the state. I think that the Secretary of Education says it's kind of a, I'm trying to remember, it's a triumvirate of factors. You've got an increasingly challenging population. You've got more difficult, you know, they're more difficult to educate, and at the same time, resources are a little bit more constrained. So you've got, you do have some headwinds at the state level. But I did want to let you know, because they're related in part to some of the things you have in your legislative program, two of the topics retreat were statewide virtual school education and charter schools. Those were both pretty significant topics of conversation, and that kind of signals that those are going to be topics of conversation going into the next General Assembly session. So with that as background, I'll just kind of leap into the program. There probably, I think it's a baker's dozen of positions that have changes in some way, shape, or form. And I'll kind of just walk through the changes and give you an idea of what they are. Please stop me either if there are changes that you want to talk about here, or if I pass by positions that you want to talk about as we go through the ones that actually haven't The first one, the first one that's changed actually is your joint position with the Board of Supervisors. It really doesn't change the thrust of the position. This position has traditionally been very much focused on the state funding, and very much focused on the fact that the localities are increasingly stressed because of the state not stepping up for funding. What the language here does, it really doesn't change that position, but it does provide some more of what I'd call advocacy language. You had the study that came out from the Joint Legislative month that we already knew on the ground, which was that state revenue and state funding for public education, when you adjust it for inflation, has been lagging. We're actually about 7% behind where we were about 10 years ago. So it's fairly significant, and it's had a significant impact in terms of staffing, both on the instructional and the non-instructional side. So I think the intent here was just to highlight some of those findings, because they do reinforce the argument, and it is, because it's coming from J-LARK, J-LARK is an independent research body, and so that's an incredibly credible source of information for us. Okay, we can actually jump all the way to the early childhood position. And if you have the, if you have the strike-through draft with you, this is, this is actually, I'm going to jump you to page five on that, just so you can see the specific changes. Really, the first change in this position, or the first recommended change, is just to clarify your position on VPI match. And just to clarify that we're advocating either reducing the required local match from localities or eliminating altogether. And there's actually a lot of precedent for that. Headstarts match is only 20%, whereas ours for VPI here in Fairfax is 50%. And when you look at other pre-K programs across states, the vast majority of them don't have a match at all. It's entirely state-funded. So Virginia is one of the few that has a match at all, and the match is relatively high, especially for Fairfax with a high local composite index. And then the second, the second bullet actually mirrors some language that the Board of Supervisors had recommended for their program. There's been a lot of talk about VPI, which is the Virginia Pre-School Initiative Eligibility, this past session. And in fact, the General Assembly created a joint task force to look at the VPI program and eligibility and eligibility criteria. One of the criteria that they were using was, I think it's 200% of poverty as one of the thresholds. Well, 200% of poverty means something a little different in Northern Virginia, where the cost of living is substantially higher than it does maybe elsewhere in the state. So one thing that would be helpful is if they do have criteria, that they have some flexibility that would allow localities to account for that difference in, you know, kind of how far a dollar goes in a particular jurisdiction or locality. So that's the intent of that change. I'll jump you ahead to Education Funding Federal, page six. Just wanted to have us, you already had a position in there opposing kind of across-the-board arbitrary cuts to federal funding, and just wanted to put in a specific reference to sequestration. Sequestration, even though there's been a budget deal, is not gone. The concept is still there, and it's just kind of been pushed down, pushed down the road a little bit, but the, you know, the possibility of that happening still exists. So I think it's probably important to have a specific reference to it. Okay, your next, next place where there are recommended changes is the Education Funding State position, and that's actually on page seven. I know, I believe all of you received a set of talking points that we had created, which gave a menu of options for the state to look at for education funding. We actually noticed that there were two of them on there, that while they're covered by more general language in the program, weren't specifically called out. So that's what these additions are, is just to specifically call those positions out and to have them explicitly listed here, as opposed to just being listed under the general provision of Fairfax County Public Schools Advocates for Additional Funding from the State. So that's really what that is. And then the deletion that you see down below, that actually doesn't delete that position. You have a mandates position, and that language is already found there, so it's a redundancy to have it in both places. Under Education Technology, the wording changes that are recommended there really are clarifications, but I did put in a reference, because the state is increasingly shifting towards computer adaptive testing. And that drives our technology needs, much the same as when the state shifted from paper and pencil to online assessment, that drove technology. Now, computer adaptive testing, because it is kind of real-world, real-time adjustments as a student is taking the assessment, that does place more stress on bandwidth, that place more emphasis on network capabilities. So I wanted to make sure that that was specifically mentioned here in your program. Now, I will caution Mrs. Smith in particular not to, not to, not to, not to overreact to the following recommendation, but what you'll see on page 10 is the Fiscal Autonomy of Elected Local School Boards. Recommendation is to actually eliminate that as a standalone position, but move the substance of the position itself into your Revenue Alternatives position, which really, that's at its root, fiscal autonomy is essentially the ultimate in revenue alternatives for local school boards. And it seemed to make sense to have that all housed in one place and in one, one area. Okay, I'll jump you ahead to page 12, VRS. Again, this is, this is more of a, just making your position a little bit more explicit. Last, last year, the state took some surplus funding and essentially bought down VRS rates. And the effect that that had on localities was it reduced the, reduced the amount of money that localities had to come up with to make their required contributions. Contributions were still made. It was akin to buying down your mortgage, is to, you know, kind of put a prepayment on your mortgage, so it brought the rates down a little bit, and it reduced some of the stress on localities, both local government and school systems, to come up with the funding for that. So I wanted to make sure that you had a specific reference to that, because that was a, I think that was an important approach the state took, and it's probably something that you'd like to see the state to continue to do, to continue to help reduce this stress on localities, ensuring that the program is solvent, because that's the priority, but to make it so that it doesn't overly stress the localities. And actually, on page 13, Revenue Alternatives, that's where the Fiscal Autonomy for Elected Local School Boards position will land if you accept the recommendation. But that's, that's where I would be. Can jump you forward to page 16. This is your Standards of Accreditation and Standards of Learning position. Fairfax is one of five localities that received a grant from the state to do some planning for kind of reimagining a high school. And I think, at least, the initial, the initial returns on that, and the initial reaction to that have been extremely positive, so we want to see that, that process continue. The money that was put in initially was intended to be kind of startup seed money. We'd like to see that funding continue and help with implementation, but also to help with alignment, because if you reimagine high school, then you can also see that you're going to need to reimagine how middle school and elementary school feed into that reimagined high school. So kind of expanding that initiative to reimagine all of the different levels, I think, will be important for the state as they go forward, and have continued discussions about graduation requirements and how high school is going to be treated. Okay. All right. Under Standards of Quality, this is really more of a data update than anything. You, as a board, and I believe this position predates me, and I, this will be my 16th session coming up, is you have a position on state funding under the Standards of Quality for ESL positions. And right now, the staffing standard that they use at the state is 17 per thousand. The number that you have here, 30 per thousand, is actually fairly substantially higher at this point than the staffing standards that we use now. We're closer to a 22 to 23 per thousand staffing standard here. Still fairly substantially higher than what the state provides, meaning that you've got 100% of that difference is made up by localities, but it's not nearly as high. Because that number shifts over time, and this is frankly something that I just hadn't addressed before, because we've tried to take data out of here that changes from year to year, this really is making it more of a general statement of the funding should be commensurate with what prevailing local practice is, and which is going to shift over time. So you don't necessarily have to have a specific number in there. The thrust of the position and the advocacy would be exactly the same. On page 18, actually received this recommendation from staff. If you look at the, there are multiple code sections in Code of Virginia that deal with the reporting of incidents in the community and then at schools to various law enforcement agencies. And they're, to be kind, a little convoluted. It's fairly typical of code language that people will add things to it over time, and then they will not go back and revisit some of the changes, and so you have some incompatibilities and some confusion. This language had been put in there to encourage the state to kind of come up with a unified way of doing it. No one's really landed on a good solution for how to handle that, and I think the fear was, is having this could come up with a solution may actually not support in terms of how they were to redefine it. So it's probably better to leave the specifics of, you want the clarification off, to actually wait if someone comes up with a clarification, and then have you react to what the clarification is. You just don't want to kind of paint yourself a little bit into a corner of having a position that says you support clarification, and when the clarification comes out, it's not something that you'd be okay with. So we're recommending that you drop that explicit position out of there. The next recommendation is on page 19, under Student Health and Wellness. This is a position that's been in the program for a little while and has never really gained any traction anywhere, and it really hasn't been a topic of conversation, so it just seems like a logical piece to prune out, because it really hasn't been, hasn't been part of the discussion in Richmond or at the federal level with federal tax law. And then the final change, and you've seen some news on this recently. Virginia has a, does have a statute that allows local school boards to use stop-arm cameras on school buses. So it actually works similar to a red light camera that, you know, take a picture of somebody who's passing a stopped school bus and can issue a citation based on that. There was a recent Attorney General's opinion that said that that statute is still, I mean, it's still valid, but it did say that if you were to want to issue tickets, instead of being able to mail them to the recipient, you actually would have to have a law enforcement officer serve the, serve the citation directly. And then there was also some language in there that would have not allowed for kind of settlement, to just be able to pay the fine and move on. So it would have encouraged a lot of, at least possibly, a lot of court challenges. So a number of jurisdictions have already gone down the road of adding these cameras to their buses. My understanding is that we are kind of in a position of, we had an RFP that's out there, but it's still in process, so they haven't been added. But I think until there's some clarity on, on that issue of can citations be issued by mail, and what were the court ramifications of it, there are going to be a lot of people who are going to be interested in trying to get some clarification from the General Assembly, particularly among those jurisdictions that already had the cameras on their buses. This is also a position that we share with the Board of Supervisors. They recently adopted that as at least part of their draft, their draft legislative program.
And Michael, because I know the question's going to come up, do you know offhand the surrounding jurisdictions that do have the cameras? I know Falls Church City does.
Falls Church does. I want to, it's either Arlington or Alexandria. It's Arlington, and I think Albemarle does. In fact, I think that that may have been where the request for the Attorney General's opinion came from, was, yeah. They're either in Charlottesville or Albemarle County, but that's where the request for the opinion came from. All right. And with that, that covers the recommended changes to your program.
Okay, thank you, Michael. So we, I'm going to go ahead and move on to the two pieces that we've already heard from board members about, and then we'll open up to more general questions. So I'll start with Ms. Strauss, and then go to Ms. McLaughlin. Ms. Strauss has been interested in adding the piece about gun safety.
Right. Under, and Mr. Malloy had suggested adding language under the part that deals with safety, adding the language that we, FCPS, supports regulations governing the proximity of gun stores to public schools. And I can explain why I believe that's important. In Virginia
Excuse me, is there language somewhere? I don't see it posted. You don't have language yet?
No.
No, I actually
That's fine.
We can, we certainly can send it out, but it was just very general language about
Right. Exactly. I had sent in an email earlier this week, from the mountains of Colorado, to Ryan, saying that I wanted to add this language, and Mr. Malloy suggested these words. In Virginia, where open carry is legal in all places, other than in schools, one of the concerns that we've been dealing with in McLean is a gun store where there, it is legal to have open carry. A gun store then, that is located so close as it is in McLean, you have open carry within 50 feet of a classroom, and it is, the community feels that just is not appropriate. It's very difficult to tell who, where the good guys and the bad guys, when they can all open carry that close to a school. So that is the language that I would propose.
Okay, thank you, Janie. Any questions on that specific issue? Okay, Ms. Schultz.
Is it legal to carry a gun in a gun store?
Yes.
Okay, so what would our language be to undo?
No, it would not do anything on private property. This does not call into question what is already permitted under law. In other words, it does, you can open carry in the gun store, you can open carry
But what are you proposing, then?
Where at least a locality, if it so chose, could, could set some parameters as to how close a gun store could actually be located with vis-a-vis a school. And a locality wouldn't have to do this, it would simply be permissive.
And that's based on what data? I mean, why is it any more dangerous to have a gun store next to a school than it is a psychologist's office dealing with mentally ill patients?
The parents in McLean, and I'm representing my own constituents, the gun store is currently located 50 feet from the cafeteria in the fifth-grade classrooms, and that means that you have open carry that is being allowed, that is very, very close to the school. The community has asked that the gun store be moved a little further away. There are other commercial properties
But some people in the community haven't asked that. Only some people in the community have asked that.
I am representing my community that feels very strongly that at least give local authority the opportunity to at least decide whether or not a gun store can be that close to a school building. It is permissive.
Thank you.
It does not say that it cannot be, it just allows local government to do that, should they wish to do it.
Ms. Heinz, then Ms. Evans.
Thank you. Ms. Strauss, I appreciate you bringing this forward. I think it is something that our local government would probably like to be able to at least talk about with our
Yes, they would.
Community. And I, you know, my own concern is that, one of the things we ask our school administrators to do now, onsite administrators, is to keep kids safe, and we have lockdown drills, and we have, we have procedures in place for if a danger is perceived in the area, right? And my concern, and this may not be shared by everybody, but I think it's a concern that I have heard, and that I would like this community to be able to discuss amongst ourselves, is if a school-based administrator or teacher looks out of the building and sees someone carrying a gun, I want them to be able to tell. It is very hard to tell. When there's open carry by anybody at any time, anywhere, it's very hard for our school administrators to know what's a dangerous situation and what is not. And when, especially if you have a gun store right next door to a school, well, then that's doubly difficult. You will have people who are walking in sight of the school openly carrying guns, and the people at the school may think, well, is that somebody shopping, or is that somebody who's dangerous to us? And I just think it gives a, it would give a level of comfort to the community and to the people at the school. So I support, at the very least, giving local governments an opportunity to talk about this.
Thank you, Ms. Heinz. Ms. Evans?
I just want to say, I appreciate you bringing this up. I think it's very worthwhile. We do have drug-free zones around our schools, and, you know, some people think that that's, you know, that doesn't mean you can sell drugs outside of the drug-free zones, whereas we do have laws about guns. I think that we do need an extra ring of safety around our schools, so I would support this.
Okay.
But I would like to see specific language.
So the specific language is that we would, and this would be added to our student safety position, that we would request regulations governing the proximity of gun stores to public schools.
In other words, we would support regulations. It is permissive. We would not be asking everybody in Virginia to do this. This is simply permissive. Because right now, under the Virginia Code, local government can regulate nothing dealing with guns.
Okay. I think, Mr. Moon?
Just to pause this a question. Thank you for bringing this one up for discussion. Is that your intent to bring an amendment to what's been already posted, or?
I guess I would, is that what you would recommend?
Yeah, so at this point, it would have to be an amendment.
Okay. That's fine.
Thank you. I would like to see the language, exact language. And sooner the better.
Okay, all right. Well, here it is.
I think, Ms. Reed?
I appreciate that you're bringing this forward as a result of what's been happening in your community, and I do think it's worth discussing as a board, but in my mind, it raises a lot of questions, like, you know, why, why just gun stores? Why not utility wires? Why not, you know, manufacturing facilities? Why not, you know?
Those, already in code, local government can regulate that. In code in Virginia, go, local government cannot regulate guns or gun stores.
And then my next question would be, whose job is it? I mean, I don't, I don't really understand how that would be our role. Wouldn't that be the supervisors?
That we should have in our, our legislative program. My community would very much like to, to show their belief that it would bring greater safety and calm to the school campus. Well, regardless of how I feel about that issue, it seems to me that's something that Supervisor Faust might bring forward in their legislative package. I believe they're going to.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Reed. Ms. McLaughlin?
So with respect to this issue, I appreciate Ms. Reed's line of question because I think it's actually providing a little bit better clarity. We benefit as a jurisdiction when we, when we work with our supervisors at things that appear to be of mutual interest between the school system and also the county as a whole. And if Supervisor Faust feels that in looking at a very significant issue that, in Drainsville District, and it's brought to light, something that he believes the county needs to take a position on, and Ms. Strauss is complementing that by saying, from a school perspective and the school community, the concern is there, then I think it warrants our board having perhaps complementary legislative priorities to it. I'm not saying whether or not Ms. Strauss's amendment is the right way to go. I'd want to see the language. As Mr. Moon pointed out, I firmly believe that you can have well-intentioned legislation, and then it's all about the execution. So, but I, I do appreciate why Ms. Strauss has brought this up. I have many friends who live in Drainsville and, and have heard from them. This is a very important issue, no matter which way you sit on it. And so I certainly would welcome seeing what the legislation or the amendment would say. And then I think we, as a board, are going to need to make sure that we, I think, have given the community a chance to see it and weigh in on it as well. So I'm just wondering, timing-wise, where that puts us. Do we know? Mr. McAlveen, like, well, if, in terms of the amendment, how much time we would have it posted and giving the community an opportunity to email the board and weigh in on this, do we have the opportunity to see what the supervisors are doing with their language? Or the possibility that they're going to have the language? Because as I say did earlier, I think there's a benefit when we do something that complements.
This comes up for new business in action on which dates?
New business is actually, it comes up right before you leave for your, the BSBA. So it's new business on Monday, and then it would be final action two-plus weeks from then because you have a Monday meeting as opposed to a Thursday.
And based on Ms. McLaughlin's questioning, can we, at that, I mean, we will have time to look at the language that the Board of Supervisors is.
Absolutely. And I also, based on the discussion that I'm hearing from the board, I think we may want to revisit the language just a little bit because if Mrs. Strauss's intention is to make it kind of local option and flexible, I think we want to make sure that we emphasize that within the language itself. Because right now, the language is relatively absolute, the regulations governing, governing the proximity of gun stores. And I think we can tweak that language a little bit to, to get at the, what I'm hearing as the intent of, of the position to have it be more of a local option. If localities don't want to do it, they wouldn't have to do it.
Okay, we have a go back from Ms. Schultz, then I'd like to move on to the next piece.
So, Mr. Malloy, correct me if I'm wrong, last year, I counted, what, 186 bullets or something in our legislative package?
Yep. I hate to admit, but it's higher than that.
So, you know, I feel like we are on a gerbil wheel of not learning a lesson and picking some priorities to get down to three or five. And, you know, more laws, Ms. Strauss, don't make us more safe. And I'm far more concerned, given the robbery history at a 7-Eleven or a bank, or a mentally ill patient being served by a hospital or clinic or doctor's office than law-abiding citizens. And in the derisive tone on the phrase "open carry," as if the people that have open carry permit are somehow not, you know, not good people, I take offense at on their behalf. So I'm worried that once again, we're headed down the exact same path of, you know, zero and 300, or whatever it is, or 500 or 700 on, in terms of successes on our legislative package. So, you know, I'll, I'll pre-announce to no surprise that I won't support a legislative package that has this in it, not only because of, on its face, it has us attacking one industry over another on the, the face of quote-unquote "making our children safe." You know, if we really want our kids to be safe, let's focus on getting our kids out of trailers and into brick-and-mortar buildings. That's, that's something, you know, substantive that I could get behind. But, but punishing one industry over another under the auspices that it's going to keep our kids safe is, is a false notion of hope for them. So, you know, I'm, I'm hopeful that we'll actually see amendments that take bullets out of this legislative package, that trim it substantially.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Schultz. And I will say that I have not discussed with Ms. Darnatt-Kofax whether or not we're going to do legislative priorities as we have in the past.
Actually, I have, and she does intend to bring those forward, and those usually are attached to the program when it comes up for final action. So you'll have a discussion over the next few weeks on that.
Okay. Okay, so we're going to move on to the next issue which Ms. McLaughlin raised, which is regarding CTE courses. If you just want to briefly state your advocacy, and Mr. Malloy can expound on that.
Yeah, I'll make this real simple. My appointee to CTEC, Career Technical Advisory Committee, basically reminded me that the CTEC has been making recommendations in their annual report that relate to how we treat certain classes to fulfill graduation requirements. And in this whole different pathways to graduation, he was talking about that there's different courses that should count toward a science graduation requirement and don't, and they're actually more rigorous than some of the ones students are taking. And then he also wanted to point out that we were really looking at some of these CTEC courses where you've got second career instructors and the certification, teaching certification requirements are rather laborious, and sometimes we then aren't able to capitalize on some subject matter experts to teach these classes. So he just brought to me, you know, these are the recommendations, they happen to relate to the legislative package, and wanted me to make sure that I brought to all of you and to Michael that, okay, this is good work out of CTEC. How, can we finally capitalize on their work and consider it as part of our legislative package? Michael sent me a very detailed response, so dense, I really started to have my eyes crossed. I just wanted to know, based on their, you know, bullet point recommendations. And so, Michael, I'll let you speak to it, but I will just say this, I understand what you were trying to communicate to, in the email to some of us. I, my concern is we might have broad language, but as Ms. Schultz kind of touched upon, and ironically, it's following with Ms. Strauss's amendment suggestion, our legislators are overwhelmed by hundreds, if not thousands, of amendment options every year. So if we aren't specific about what we're asking them to do, it will just sit buried in however many pages this legislative program is. So I'd really like this board to think about, if we've had a specific ask from CTEC and with Dr. Garza's input and saying, yeah, I think those would really benefit us as a system, let's actually put them into the legislative package as clear and specific to what the ask is. Because having talked to my legislators, they'll just go, I don't have time to do that, so unless you're going to bring me a specific, you know, proposed legislation, it will just sit in there.
Okay, Mr. Malloy, do you want to respond?
Well, go ahead.
Well, I think what you're saying, I think there is, you know, this has been something we've been talking about for years, multiple pathways to a high school diploma. In fact, we spent an entire day together recently talking about what this could look like. Just want you to know, the leadership team is already beginning, we spent a full day starting to, doing exactly what the CTE Advisory Committee suggested, and that is to provide a model. Because I do think sometimes they need, we need to show them a roadmap. I think that's why the Portrait of a Graduate's gotten so much play. In fact, Secretary Holden mentioned it to us today and said that she's passing it around to people across the state, which I thought was great. So we're working on some modeling for them. I think it's up to the board whether or not you want to have specificity within the legislative program, and then let's get this other piece of work done very soon in terms of a sample, or do you want to, you know, depends if you want to go broad or go very specific. But I do think it's referenced, at least conceptually, what you're talking about, Ms. McLaughlin, on page 16, the fifth bullet, which talks about the multiple pathways to earn a diploma and the ability to, to further explore career clusters of interest, and that's what we're working on the design around.
And that's what I really want to avoid. I mean, in this way, where I need to bring amendments, and why I would like to hear my colleagues speak to it at this work session with that very purpose. I think that we can be wanting as a system to do something more broadly, but why would we wait another legislative session if we know strategically we can target some, you know, immediate improvements and change in terms of specific courses being re-designated and recognized as fulfilling a science requirement? That, yes, we can go ahead and say, this is how these teachers, you know, can come and start teaching if they don't have the traditional certification.
I actually think we're advocating for the same thing, it's just approach, right, and how we do it. And from a legislative perspective, would, would they not, the state board, need the authority, but the state board then would go through and start to identify the replacement of courses? Is that correct?
Yeah.
So the legislature wouldn't actually do, go through that exercise, they would need the, the state board would need the authority to do it? Is that correct?
The, the General Assembly oftentimes will pass legislation which directs the State Board of Education to do certain things. Exactly, exactly. And I think in part what Ms. McLaughlin is referring to is kind of a translation process that goes on with this program and with things like Portrait of a Graduate and things that have more general language is, at the end of the day, when you get to the General Assembly session, you have to introduce a bill. You have to have actual language somewhere in the code that says you want to do X, Y, and Z. It's difficult to do that in the context of a legislative program because a legislative program is really, in some ways, intended to be the board's broad priorities, and then you translate that down into specific recommendations. In what you sent, in what you sent to me, it seemed like the, the language there was still, was still relatively broad in terms of the asks. One of the, one of the, one of the recommendations was asking the school board and the government relations office to seek and support legislation that could lead to flexibility in how graduation requirements were met. That needs to be translated into, is the board going to advocate to eliminate a certain number of required verified credits? Is the board going to advocate for? So there has to be that translation. I think, you know, it, it's very difficult for you as a board to have, and this becomes the program of, of, of Ms. Schultz nightmares, which is, which is you have the, all of the specifics in there, and now you're talking about a hundred-page program and more bullets than she would care to, to, to count up. So part of it is just a translation of these broader perspectives into really specific asks. And the ask may be of different, of different people. It may not only be to the, the General Assembly. It may be, it may be to the State Board of Education. It may be to ABTEL, which deals with the licensure regulations for the state, to translate some of those suggestions for, I think one of them in here was cross-curricular licensure, so allowing people who had expertise in multiple fields to be able to teach in multiple fields, whereas right now, it's relatively siloed in terms of expertise. So those asks may not only be to the General Assembly for a bill, it may be advocating to Superintendent of Public Instruction to revisit the regulations dealing with licensure or the regulations dealing with the standards of accreditation. The state is undergoing kind of parallel processes right now. They're looking at this, the State Board of Education is looking at the standards of accreditation, which deal with graduation requirements, which deal with, you know, a lot of these broad topics. But when you look at the standards of accreditation, they're very prescriptive. It's, you take X number of courses and X number of subjects. So the state board is having that conversation, and that is somewhere where we can, you know, take ideas. The Standards of Learning Innovation Committee, even though they're called the Standards of Learning Innovation Committee, is also looking at graduation requirements and looking at those factors because what they've determined is you can't have a conversation about assessments without having a conversation with what assessments are attached to, which are the actual courses and, and those types of things that, that students actually have to take in order to be prepared to take those assessments. So you've got, you know, you've got a lot of conversation, and a lot of the, the subjects that are talked about here are exactly what the State Board of Education, exactly what the SOL Innovation Committee are looking at. Now, unfortunately, at the state level, sometimes these things move glacially. If you, when you talk about making a change in state regulation, it's a minimum of 18 months to go through the entire process of having it run all the way through the state system, having all the public comment and everything. So it takes a long time for these things, unfortunately, sometimes to percolate through.
Okay. Thanks, Michael.
All right, no, I, I need just to understand something for clarity's sake. So in terms of the recommendations coming from CTEC, what I heard you say is, we're better off just staying with the broad-based language of our legislative program because that's really how this fits well. And we can just have informationally, give them examples of, this is what it would look like. But then, what I guess I can't reconcile is, we just talked about amendment that Ms. Strauss wants to do, which I heard is quite specific legislative ask. So I, I feel a little schizophrenic right now about what is our legislative program specific when we want to be specific about, you know, certain topics and then otherwise stay broad? So I don't really understand how would Ms. Strauss's amendment fit into the package you just explained to me is how we really want to approach this, which is stay broad.
Well, on what we could do, because we're talking about a listing of what we're, what the work we've been doing behind the scenes at your direction after the last retreat, is going through all of the various graduation requirements and the varied courses that we offer. And I think we showed this to you, we have some wonderful CTE courses that are very rigorous, such as the cybersecurity courses as an example, and so they don't even count toward a science credit. So we're going through and we're saying, these are, you know, just some modeling around, these are some varied pathways, and then what courses we think could substitute. But it is real specific, Ms. McLaughlin, so, I mean, I, I get your point, but it's going to have to, I think what we need to do is, is identify specific courses and show how we think they can substitute, so.
But, but going to Michael's point, in terms of the legislation, then if we went with what you just described, which is at a broad level, we're not saying we want the General Assembly to approve this or that, that's not even their purview. But if it is to say, we want local school divisions to have what this decision-making authority to say, if we think cybersecurity fulfills the science requirement, then, you know, we need the latitude for, because honestly, I know the Board of Education, and I don't feel like we have to sit here for a year and a half waiting to slog through something.
I don't, I don't know if it's going to be a year and a half because I do have some optimism around our state superintendent. He's really pushing these issues and asking for specific guidance and ideas. I hope it's, you know, I hope it's not going to take that long. I think there's some real receptivity from leadership at the state level.
And, and I agree with that. The reason that I say that these things take about a year and a half is because there are particular, there are actually timelines built into the statutes that deal with, you have an entire regulatory process at the state level, and they have to be open for comments for a certain number of days, and there have to be. comments for a certain number of days, and there have to be, there's a certain number of days that the governor's office has to review it, and there's a certain number of days. They're actually very specifically prescribed in terms of how long some of these things may take. Now, there may be broad consensus and everybody completely agrees with it, and that can speed the process up a little bit, but because you have those statutory requirements of how long they have to take, they, there is, there is a built-in delay in their process. And that's just, I mean, that's true of any regulatory change that the state, that the state goes through, that the Administrative Process Act is very prescriptive about how the state deals with regulatory change.
So just, I know we're trying to move on, so I'm just feeling less clear instead of more clear. At this point, do I report back to my Braddock district appointee? Thanks for bringing it up. We think it's captured in our current legislative program. Other than if we, as individual school board members, work with Michael to draft an amendment to bring to a sponsoring state delegate or state senator, it is what it is. I mean, I just feel like I don't, I wouldn't even know what to answer to my Braddock district representative on where this is going.
Well, I think, I think the first part of what you say is exactly right, is that the, the language that you already have in the program, dealing with career switching on the licensure side and alternative licensure for that cross-curricular license, and on the standard of accreditation, you know, the language that you have already which advocates for expanding the number of courses that count towards graduation, I think that gives you a broad umbrella. Then the process becomes, as Dr. Garza mentioned, once we identify the specific courses and down to the course level, to say that we believe Nursing 101 is the equivalent of biology, that, just as an example, but that, once you get down to that level of specificity, then that's what you can submit to the state because that's something that they can, they can take action on. And I don't, just based on what Dr. Garza's saying, I'm not sure that we're at that level of specificity, and I don't think even what, what your constituent sent in this email was to that level of specificity to say that we want this specific course to count for this specific graduation requirement.
Right.
That's, that's what needs to get translated.
So what I'm hearing you say, when I think I heard Dr. Garza say, is this may not have to be, we, nothing could happen in this 2016 General Assembly, and yet the state superintendent could entertain a request from Karen Garza saying, we want these identified classes to count toward an alternative for science graduation? Like, in other words, do I need to go back to him and say, don't worry about it, this actually isn't stuff for the General Assembly, it's just our State Board of Education?
No, I think maybe it's an interpretation question, right? I think from what we read from, from that particular committee member, we think that's there, reflected there. If we need to change any of the language to better reflect what you think he was pushing, I think we can certainly do that, but.
Absolutely.
So I think it's what's missing there, or what could we change that would give you more confidence about that, the fact that we've responded to his issues.
Right. I just want to understand how we carry this ball. So it's that you now know and have heard this conversation, and so as the issue arises in this area within legislative pack, package, you'd then be providing more specificity to delegates and senators saying, here's what we're really hoping for in this particular section of the package.
That's, that's one prong of it, and the other prong of it is as staff comes up with these equivalencies, to be able to say that this course really should be the equivalent of this other course, those are things that we can take to the state, either to the General Assembly or to the State Board of Education, to, you know, to really get down to that specific level of this specific course should count for this specific thing.
Okay, we do need to move on to some other members. Ms. Hines, then Ms. Reed.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to say, I appreciate Ms. McLaughlin's conversation about this because it is, you know, this is a challenge every year to look at this and say, okay, we've got to give some direction, but if we put actual language in here, then we tie ourselves in some kind of knots, right? Because if the language that we want isn't exactly what comes forth down there in Richmond and through that sausage-making process that they have, then does it mean we don't support the general direction? You know, so I think, and that's a challenge I have as well, talking to my legislators, you know, when I meet with them, and if I have a legislator who wants to carry something, you know, and then I think probably what I want to help them be able to do is craft language, right? Because that's what they have to do. And that's when I would look not only to this document, but also to you, Michael, to help do that. And so I don't know if that, that's how I understand kind of our role at this point. But anyway, but I really appreciate the conversation.
Ms. Reed, then Mr. Stork.
First of all, I appreciate Ms. McLaughlin bringing this issue forward, and in fact, I've heard quite a bit myself about kind of this disconnect between people who are out in the community who have professional certifications and who want to get involved in the classrooms and, you know, are so highly qualified to have other huge positions but yet aren't allowed in our classrooms because of the requirements for credentialing. And so to me, that, that is, it might be very specific, and I don't see it in here, and that might be something that I would want to suggest. It's alluded to, but I think that that could be, whether we could get a waiver or somehow address. I mean, people come to me begging to have this addressed, and I'll just read what someone wrote to me. "The teacher credentialing process is lengthy and cumbersome for industry-certified professionals seeking to transition into teaching hard-to-fill positions." And so to me, that's a barrier to pathways to graduation, it's a barrier to getting our talented community involved, and most, probably most importantly, it's a barrier to meeting the specialized needs in our business community. So for all those reasons, I think that we need to specifically mention that, but in listening to the discussion, it seems like there's a difference of opinion about how specific to be, so I might suggest that we work on some language in the priority document, which I absolutely think we must have, that says something like, remove and address barriers to pathways to graduation, and then list course equivalencies, teacher credentialing, and maybe there's a couple other things, and that might be a way to get at it, and that if anyone agrees, maybe we could kind of think that through. That's just off the top of my head. But this, this issue of the credentialing, to me, from what I'm hearing in the community, is a big deal, and it's, it's fixable if someone will just step up and try to fix it.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Reed. Mr. Stork?
Thank you. I have to also leave in about five or 10 minutes, so I just, I'm sorry, but I have another appointment, another engagement with the community. My understanding is that the state has kind of forced us to accept their eligibility standards for our programs. The kind of free and reduced meal standard is not, is, we have to, I guess, accept a standard statewide eligibility standard and not have one that's adjusted for the higher incomes that are typical of Northern Virginia.
Actually, under the VPI program currently, there, there are various eligibility criteria that locality is using. What the General Assembly talked about last year and what they may bring forward this year is to make that standard more uniform, so that it is, so that the eligibility standard is relatively similar in, from jurisdiction to jurisdiction. I think that's what we're concerned about, is that they make, that they make it too uniform and that they don't account for things like differences in cost of living. So that really was the intent of this change, was to ask to retain that flexibility that we already have, but that may be part of a restriction that's coming down the pike.
It's, it sounds like it's a pattern, at least, that the state officials are pursuing. I know, in particular, I had a conversation with this about a county program that they basically took away their ability to have a different standard in Fairfax County, they kind of forced them. And so my concern about this, when you mentioned, is that, is that a direction that they're going? Is there enough legislative, I mean, right now legislatively, we can keep that standard, but there may be legislation that would preclude that, or are the, can they do this through regulations? What's, do you have any idea what the basis for their?
I think, unfortunately, the answer is it can happen under, it can happen via a number of different mechanisms. An example here in the education world is the General Assembly eliminated funding for support cost of competing. That was an additional increment that came to localities in Northern Virginia that, that it was really the only place in the state budget that accounted for the fact that it is more costly to hire and retain high-quality personnel in Northern Virginia than it is anywhere else in the state. And they eliminated that funding, so Fairfax, Loudoun, Prince William, Arlington, Alexandria, Manassas, Manassas Park lost some degree of funding because of that elimination.
I understand that. So are they, my question is, do they have to do, make that change legislatively, or can they do it through regulation?
It depends on the arena. It depends on actually which policy you're looking at because some of the, some of those requirements might be in regulation and some of them might be in code, so it's going to, that, that would govern where they'd have to go to make the change.
Specifically for preschool, because I thought that's what you referred to in the beginning of our conversation, and I don't know if there's any other areas that might impact us or not, but for preschool standard, preschool availability and funding, is that something that they're looking to change?
That, it is something that they're discussing, and that would be a legislative change, that actually, the commission that looked at that came out of the Appropriations Act, it was actually a rider to the Appropriations Act, and it would probably be appropriations language that would carry forward those eligibility requirements.
Is it, unless we do, unless something happens otherwise, it's likely to change, or is there, you have to act?
They would, they would have, they would have to pass it in the General, it would have to go through the regular, the regular process in the General Assembly of introducing legislation and having it pass both houses and having it signed by the governor.
And it's, it may be somewhat not critical since the funding right now for preschool is inadequate and the match required is inadequate. Is that, would you assess it that way as well, or?
I, I think that any change is critical because when you change eligibility requirements, you're, you're changing funding not just here in Fairfax, you're changing it across, across the state, and that can have an impact on.
Potential funding, so if we, obviously, if we have different standards here that would allow more kids to be covered, then potentially we would get a larger share of the pie, is that?
Correct.
So it is something that should be probably high on our, our priority list, at least in terms of making sure the Northern Virginia educators are familiar with what the concern would be, and this would be more global, not just school-related. So we'd have a chance to partner with the county on this issue because they would have similar concerns about other aspects of funding that they would get.
Yeah, and as I mentioned, with the, the specific recommendation of the language that we were looking to add to the VPI or to the early childhood position, that's language that's mirrored by the Board of Supervisors, that they, they're also going to adopt in their legislative program, or at least their, their recommended legislative program at this point. So we'd have peril language coming from both the county side and from the school side.
Okay, thanks, Dan. So just to wrap up Ms. McLaughlin's piece, I think the best thing for you to do is to work with staff over the next couple of weeks to see what, what you want, how you want to pursue this, and then work with Tammy as well.
And in retrospect, too, in looking at this, we may need to be a little bit more specific about flexibility on licensure. So as I'm reading over this, and, you know, we can, we can work on some language, but that's on page 21, and we may need a little bit more specificity.
Yeah, it's certainly something that we can draft.
So, yeah, what I would do is, because I, I think Ms. Reed really tapped into, you know, where we would find the best approach, so I'll work with her, and then we'll make sure we bring it to Tammy and Dr. Garza and Michael to refine.
Okay, so we are already over time. I do want to at least leave a couple minutes for general observations on this. So Ms., we'll start with Ms. Evans, and please, please keep your comments to one minute, okay?
Okay, I'll try. I'm glad to hear we're going to do the priorities, I think that's critical. And I appreciate Megan bringing the, those issues up, and I think Patty's got a, you know, I think that honing it down to some of those things, so I, I think that's a good idea, I'll look forward to seeing that language. On the fiscal autonomy, I kind of like it where it was, personally. I think that's, the more we find ourselves in the situation we are, personally, I, I think that it, highlighting it is a good idea, so I'll just make that point, I don't know if anyone agrees with me.
And you could bring forward that as an amendment, if that's what you want to do.
Okay, I guess I would welcome any thoughts on that. And lastly, on the issue of the, of reporting the criminal activities, we're just taking that out because no one's come up with a good solution. I guess I'm thinking that this is such an important issue that I would, I would like to see us try to find some specific advocacy on that as opposed to just removing it because it's so unclear. I mean, I think it's important that the state does try to clarify that, and if we're worried that they'll do it the wrong way, I would hope we could find some advocacy to, to ask them to do it the right way. And I don't know what that is, but maybe if we put our heads together, we can think of it.
Yeah, and I think that, I think the fear, at least from the staff perspective, is that they don't have the answer either, is that it is, I mean, because you have, you're, you're dealing with not just the school system, but you're also dealing with law enforcement, you're dealing with multiple entities and multiple agencies, that it's a fairly broad conversation to kind of figure out how all those pieces would work together. It's certainly something that we can pursue, I'm not sure that we can pursue it in the next few weeks to come up with an answer because I think people have been noodling about this for a while and haven't landed on anything that made everybody happy or that made, made things clearer and fairer in terms of how, how these situations were handled. But it's certainly something that can, you know, the staff can continue to work on.
Okay, thanks, Ms. Evans. Mr. Velkoff?
Thank you. I just have a question for Mr. Malloy. Is there ever any talk about dedicating a revenue stream to education, either at the local level or at the state level?
Well, actually, technically speaking, there is a revenue stream that's dedicated to edu, there are two. One is lottery proceeds, that, that funding is dedicated to education, and lottery proceeds over time have changed. It used to be that they were, they served as a supplement, so there was additional funding. Over time, what's happened is, as, but the budget has been cut. The state has actually moved programs that were previously funded under the General Fund to the lottery fund, so now there's specific programs in the lottery fund that are funded that way. One of the, one of the talking points that we gave to the state was to try and reverse that shift, was to take lottery funds back to its original purpose of being supplemental funding and having the General Fund take back the lion's share of those programs. So that's one, and the second one that's dedicated to us is at least a portion of the sales tax. A portion of the sales tax is dedicated specifically to education. So you do have two revenue streams, not to say that you wouldn't want many more, but there are two already out there.
Okay, so with that, we will bring this session to a close. I know Ms. Darnatt-Kofax will be in touch with everyone about the priorities document, and again, if you have any additional suggestions, please bring those to Michael and Tammy. Okay, and before we close, we do have a Boy Scout in the audience? I don't know if, oh, we just, oh, okay, sorry about that. Okay, and so we'll take a two-minute break before Ms. Smith takes over.